To the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Our Father which art in heaven, dear Lord God, it is once again that we come humbly before your throne of grace to say thank you. We thank you dear Lord God for all your many blessings you bestowed upon the citizens of Dillon. We thank you for our mayor, our city council, our city manager, our city attorney, your Lord God. We ask that you bless them, Lord God. Our department heads on tonight as we make decisions for the betterment of all the citizens of Dillon. And in everything that we do, we pray that we be careful to give your name the glory, your name the honor, and your name the praise. But it's in Jesus' name we pray. Amen.
Motion approved the agenda. Come on in. Back to the hall in favor. I approve. The motion approved amendments for the January 9th regular scheduled meeting. Make the motion. Come on in. I approve. Thank all y'all for coming tonight. Got a good bit on the agenda. It'll be a little longer than last time. I think last time we had big football games and we pressed it along tonight. I don't think anything was giving before us other than this need. I do want to start with something that's not on the agenda though, and that is, I know Richard Schaper's here, which is the director of American Red Cross here in Dillon County. He and I were talking a while ago before he came in, and I brought this up on my last down home Dillon show, part of it that I did. Terrible as that hurricane was, I know the Red Cross has involved more than tragedies and catastrophes and hurricanes, but as bad as that was, he and I were just discussing it was how families and people came together like I've never seen before around here. I know my family did. I saw families eating out together and in fact, I quoted it being back in the old days when families had to take care of each other. You had no other choice. Well, during this hurricane, a lot of us, we had no other choice. It was neighbors helping neighbors and a big part of that is what caused the American Red Cross. Richard, I'm gonna read this proclamation for you. March is American Red Cross Month. Whereas in the city of Dillon, we have a long history of helping our neighbors in need. American Red Cross Month is a special time to recognize and thank our heroes, those Red Cross volunteers and donors who give of their time and resources to help community members. Whereas those heroes help families find a shelter after a home fire, they give blood to help trauma victims and cancer patients. They deliver comfort items to military members in the hospital, they use their life-saving skills to help someone from a heart attack, drowning, or choking. They enable children around the globe to be vaccinated against measles or vella. Whereas the American Red Cross depends on local heroes to deliver health and hope during a disaster. We applaud our heroes here in the city of Dillon who give themselves to assist their neighbors in that they need a helping hand. Whereas across the country, around the world, the American Red Cross responds to disasters big and small. In fact, every eight minutes, the organization responds to a community disaster, providing shelter, food, emotional support, and other necessities to those affected. Collects nearly forty percent of the nation's blood supply. Provides 24-hour support to military members, veterans, and their families. Teaches millions of life-saving skills such as lifeguarding and CPR. And through its restoring family links programs, connect family members separated by crisis, conflict, or migration. Whereas we dedicate the month of March to all those who support the American Red Cross mission to prevent, alleviate human suffering in the face of emergencies. Our community depends on the American Red Cross, which relies on donations of time, money, and blood to build its humanitarian mission. Now therefore, I, J. Todd Davis, the mayor of the city of Dillon, by perpetuity of authority vested in me by the Constitution and laws of the city of Dillon in South Carolina, do hereby proclaim March 2017 as American Red Cross Month. I encourage all Americans to support the organization, to build its humanitarian mission. Richard, well, thank you for all you do, all the members you have. I know you gave a push if one time Dillon didn't have but a handful of members in the Red Cross, and they responded. I know I was one of them and you know, out at the shelter during the hurricane and just you can't do without you. A community can't do without the Red Cross. You don't think much about it till it happens and when you need them, but also more so when you see other people need them. So I want to thank all the members, and if anything else you'd like to add, I would ask you to do so here.
I absolutely would like to thank the city government. I have never, and I've lived here all my life, seen a county and cities come together like this. I was in charge of Dillon County during this episode, and never did I have to reach out for assistance from anybody. The mayor was there, the police chiefs were there, the police department was there, Glenn Wagner was there, sheriff's departments were there, EMS was there, the hospital was there. So it was a group effort on everybody's part, and it was a tremendous offering to do what we did. Because that hurricane separated Dillon County from the rest of our PDJ. That I-95 was blocked. We were alone. We were by ourselves. We were cut off. Communications, as you all well know, were awful. Cell phones didn't work. We were by ourselves, but we made it happen. And that was because of a great effort by a lot of people. We had 200 people in the shelter. We had no power. We had, by the grace of God, we had put assets over here, cots and blankets and MREs. Never did the person in that shelter have to eat an MRE. You know why? The Dillon County school system came up and provided the food and all the cooking for that shelter for all the days that we ran it. They had hot meals every day. The food service workers in Dillon District Four stayed in that shelter the whole time to cook those meals. So we didn't have to go to MREs, thank God. That was a miracle unto itself. So I just commend all of you. You did a great job. You ought to be very proud of Glenn and his crew. We had service every day and didn't have to call him because we couldn't have called him over. But it was a great offering, and I do appreciate it. You made it look real good. And we took care of 200 and plus people for almost a week.
I also thank the Dew Farms. And he's still looking for members.
Yeah. I'm always looking for volunteers. It takes a lot of us. So if you want to volunteer for the Red Cross, all you got to do is call Glenn.
All right. Y'all got a lot to pack tonight. We got a book set up that way. Wellness Center. I went out there Friday night. I'll go Friday night sometime and get to the Wellness Center, do my little thing on the elliptical. They closed Friday night. Reason it was closed Friday night was the father-daughter dance. And Glenn told me we had over 930 tickets sold. Biggest event. My first thought, how we got that many people in there? What a great event you put on here. They do an outstanding job. It's the city of Dillon, but also the Kiwanis Club, I guess lots of that. They do a wonderful job with it. So I know everybody had a good time. They were posting pictures all night of the dads and their daughters throughout the whole Maggie, welcome back. It's been a long, long wait. You missed it. Maggie has, I'm gonna step right into it. I've been talking a long time, what council there, about the facade grant program, and I'm gonna leave some of that to you, Maggie. Before I do that, this past Friday, Glenn and I went to the city of Florence and spoke to Ray Rich. Rich, he's the downtown economic developer there, and had a great meeting with him for about an hour. Before I got settled back in my office, he emailed Glenn and I to package what Florence does on trying to revive lives there downtown. If y'all haven't seen Florence, y'all need to see it. It's a work in progress, and they've gone a long way. Ray gave us all this. And the good thing about it is not much. What I left with from him, their program, and they spent a lot of time with it, he just flat gave it to us. He said, and I'll quote him, "This can be done in a city of 3,000 or in a city of 5,000." And I've briefly gone over it, and he's right. It doesn't take, you know, big cities to do what they're doing as far as planning, how they go about how much money they spend, it's a different thing. But this can be done right here in Dillon. And this is where we're going with this council. I hope it's on my agenda for the remainder of my term. This is where I'm gonna focus my time this day on hand. I'm really excited about it. One of the questions I asked Ray, because I've been touting this facade grant for some time, was would you wait to implement or put your whole plan on the table before you put the facade grant out? He goes, "Yes, I would." But I'm gonna ask him also to go ahead and get this final approval on this facade grant to do ASAP. Now, I think this isn't the final touch, but it's a good starting point, Maggie. And I think it'll get, you know, the businesses involved that they want to start working on their building. And I had it highlighted on a few points, now I can't find it, but... But I don't want to wait for this overall program, but I do want y'all to look at, you know, going forward. I'll get y'all copies of what Florence is doing. And let me tell you, it's not gonna be easy to do. And what I mean easy to do is, you know, there's gonna be a commitment on us, on town, and on the property owners. Because one of the things Florence does, they initiated a new ordinance called a Maintenance and Appearance Code. So you can imagine what that's kind of about. Glenn asked how to enforce that, what is enforced. But they don't want it to get to that point. They bring all the parties in. Everybody over there for most parts on board. If you go to Florence, you can see that they are on board with... Sorry, I do not have the highlights of this facade grant, Maggie. I'll read it when it comes up to your point. I'll bring it back up. But we did, in this proposal, raise the money to $12,000. I think it's 3,000. Is it 3,000?
3,000.
Total. So if you spend three, you get three.
Of a max of 3,000.
Max of 3,000.
But it doesn't have to be that much. It could be 1,000, split by fifty percent.
Okay.
So it vaguely works just like it did before. We just didn't have the money to commit before. So now, I mean, you take a grant that's, a project that's $6,000, and they're gonna get 3,000 back, that will go a long way towards some of the buildings downtown. And it's not just the facade, the face of the building. Everybody these days considers the facade the sidewalk to the curb. So it's anything that happens between the facade, the awnings, it could be flags, planters, tables and chairs, anything, any amenity on Main Street in the commercial district. So that will buy, that'll spend a lot of money.
Windows, you name it. How do we get the message to the business owners? What are they doing as far as that?
Once you all decide to do this, I'm going to mail every owner and every business owner a letter of what we're going to do. And it'll be about three or four weeks. We'll have a meeting out at the Wellness Center, because I want to tell them all at one time. And that has to do with the preservation tax credit, which you will be seeing that next council meeting. And twenty percent for 20 years is a long time of tax credits at a lower straight. So that's a very good thing. But you all, that's an amendment to an ordinance we already had, passed in '08. So we need to tell them about that at the same time.
As far as the money, we're saying at $12,000, huh? Are we gonna put...
That's what we're gonna put in the budget.
Is that really enough money? What if they come out in droves and stuff? Can't we give them a little bit more? Can't we put more money in the budget?
I'm sure we might, he and Johnny. They haven't come out in droves to start.
Well, I mean, if you call this meeting at the Wellness Center, they might take your manager knowing that they got a 50/50.
Well, it is on the first come, first served basis. You gotta fill out an application, and you gotta get approved. One of my questions though, Maggie, was who is gonna approve the grant?
Board of Architecture Review.
I would just sue. That's fine, but I would like in addition to that.
In addition to that? I talked with John about sometime Councilman John Brandy. Sometime before, we had a development committee for downtown, and that was just citizenry. And that worked really well. And I think out of these pool of people that will come to the Wellness Center, we need not only the Board of Architectural Review, which deals with facades and National Register, but we need this other pool of people that has everything represented.
Yeah, I agree, Maggie. I think the more we can get the people that work and own the property downtown involved in that process, the better we're gonna do.
To really be dealing with two different sets of people.
I think it needs to be more than just Board of Architectural Review.
Right.
Think outside the box a little bit on that.
How did, I can't remember how grace that they did that for. Because he has a staff of two himself, a secondary.
I'm sure it's in here.
It may be. I can't remember.
We just got that, and we'll see. I know you did a good job on accountability, on making them accountable for when they get reimbursed by cancel or checks.
See, I would like to see this not wait until the end of the fiscal year, which is what we've always done, is if you approve it now, why can't we start now?
Oh, I agree. I think so. I mean, I hope.
So that at the end of the fiscal year, I can come back and say, "Well, this was very successful. We didn't end up with 12," or another whatever you decide. Expenses are just so great, people say, "I can't do it for that." An awning like the, I'm not sure of the Sloans, but the two awnings that I did work on on MacArthur, they were like $1,500 each.
But in the meantime, are you gonna be trying to get a grant that all said, you know, I mean, we owe them about $12,000.
You are the grant.
Yeah, but I mean, I go back, I said three or four months ago, you know, Bennisfield applied for a grant, and they got a grant for facade. And in the meantime, can't we still be pursuing that or trying to get grant money to help our downtown?
We can, when it comes around again. It'll come around again in about August. But we have to be ready for that.
And you bring it up for Bennisfield and along with Florence. They have a downtown association, and that's what we've got. And those folks are a business side. They've got to play a part. And I'm not sure, but I think they're a non, they're considered a non-profit. They are, yeah. And that's where they get a lot of things through that.
One that definitely little man free down in the fallen street, what's that about going back there?
Sir?
One that falling down in the little man's street. You're gonna think one way or another. Could be on the main street.
I'm gonna refer that back to Benny.
Now, this is just a start of the facade grant. The rest of the stuff here, what Florence does, is about the buildings. You know, that's the whole other stuff. That's right, you gotta have a downtown development association. So we need volunteers. And, you know, from the property owners to on or off Main, or just concerned citizens inside the city. We want participation. I've been telling you, the council up here is not gonna do that. Be a part of it. I mean, we just aren't. I'm gonna be a part of it, but I'm off of Main Street. I have a stake in a couple of places. And look, I'm excited about building coming up. I just don't think we're ready.
John, we have like eight or nine members before.
Yeah.
It was a good smattering of different, garden clubs were involved. I mean...
It's gonna take a while to build that group back up, but we're gonna have to garner support from the residents to begin with. And I think we do need to get several clubs and garden clubs involved.
We also need to relook at the Board of Architectural Review. I had this preservation tax credit and this facade grant ready for the board meeting that we had on December 5th. And I made it very clear, I sent out letters, "You gotta be there." It was in the paper. We had two people. That was not a forum. We couldn't do anything.
Well, the key to this is we've got to make it easy, and we've got to make it convenient for the property owners, for the business people to do this.
We've already talked about not doing the color approvals. You just can't do that. There's no color scheme that you could translate from paper to a building. And you really, we have not been able to do anything about the signage at all. That just does not work. You can't, you know, as soon as you get one fixed over here, something else happens. So the other two towns that you've mentioned, they don't govern those either. And so it's time for us to, you know, let people do what they want to do.
Well, this is an elephant, and I think we're gonna have to eat it one bite at a time. But I think this is a great start, and I think this, the whole problem I have to, I have to say, start now, not in fiscal year 2017, exact. And I'll make the motion that we approve these guidelines to begin with.
We can have first reading on that.
Well, it's not actually an ordinance. It's not an ordinance, it's more policy.
But when you have your meeting at the Wellness Center, Ms. Maggie, are you gonna ask the business owners then to try to get into an association or form an association?
Yes.
You got to have it.
Our plans are going forward is to ask them at this meeting, that's what I'm...
Councilwoman, we had one meeting the week before the storm. One meeting. And we had made all these plans, this is what we're gonna do. And then, of course, you know, the storm just wiped everything away from what anything was going. And we just invited, I think, six or eight people that we wanted to get their feeling about what we needed to do, and some good things happened with that. But after that, it just, you know, we had to back up and... I'd rather tell everybody at one time that's interested than, "Oh, I heard about this," or "I heard about that," or "Are you gonna let me participate?" So I'd rather do it all at one time, so they all hear about it.
Maggie, I'll be there too. I'm J. Todd. I've got a vested interest in it for a number of reasons. I helped start that original Main Street Association a number of years ago, and I am more than happy to help get it going again. It's gonna take that long with what we do. We're gonna have to help guide and shepherd this through the whole process and be the leaders in it. But, you know, once we get people to buy into it, it'll be a lot easier to do. So I'd be more than happy to help with that group to begin with and whatever we need to do to help J.
I'd like to bring it back next month, because I don't think we're ready to say we're gonna pass it. For one question, the historic district where you're talking about putting this facade grant program goes from here at the city county complex all the way east of Methodist Church. Now, are you gonna do this in sections?
No.
No.
Because what I was hearing was you didn't include me. No, how come I'm not included in this? I think if you just tell them everybody at one time, and that's including the cross streets of MacArthur and Railroad, so that everybody in the commercial district hears the same thing all along, and they know whether they want to do preservation tax credit or they want to do this.
I think if we could get four properties between now and July going on it, and then another starting, another four starting in July, that'd make a huge impact.
Oh, it will.
But it'll be small.
But my thing is, I'm scared it's gonna be sporadic. You gonna have them down here, you gonna have them over here? It's the best to do it in sections to make it look pretty as you come this way.
But is that fair to everybody?
I mean...
You can't...
We talked about that at one time. We talked about that initially, which that's the way I would prefer, but then again, why are you gonna leave me out? You know, so, I mean, and that's something y'all are gonna have to...
The point of that is you can make an impact if you get four on the same block.
That'd be the perfect scenario.
But, you know, there are gonna be a lot of people that are gonna get their feelings hurt because their block wasn't included.
Or it could be three or four years before their blocks. All right, we'll see where that goes. So it is just policy, and it can change basically monthly. So if you want to, if you want to change anything, we can change it each and every time if you want to change some things here and there as far as money is concerned. We should be... Bert, how many more alleys we got?
I think two.
Is it this budget year? And we'll be finished?
That's what we were shooting for. We've kind of run behind now.
But I mean, that was our goal, is to be finished by June on all the alleys. So, you know, we spent, or we budgeted in the last four, five, six years, $25,000, $30,000. So, you know, there's some monies that can be used if we need to. And I don't know, you could put $100,000, don't know if it'd be used, but... So the dollar amount could change, I guess, is my...
I think this is a good way to get it started. But I think that's all it is, is a start.
Put his first reading in his council, when Brandy made a motion, do you have to have...
Well, it's not an ordinance. Well, you gotta have a motion if you want to go forward with it. Just have it as policy. You got a first and a second.
All in favor?
I think so.
All right, good.
So it passes. One, two, three, four, five, zero.
Yeah. One thing I ask you to think about, if you got six applicants that come up, what's the selection criteria in how we do that? What I think we need to do.
Well, it's my interest. It would be the most impact for the dollar. So, I mean, we've got some that have already gotten money.
Yeah, that's right.
Which would preclude that they wait a while.
Well, who do you want that selection committee to, who do you want to be the final say in? Who gets what money?
I don't know. Just going to tell Maggie, put some thought to it, right, you know, in the next week or so.
I think it should call back to you folks, that if you have one that comes up, you know, maybe do them quarterly. And bring them to you as council, this is what we got, here's what we got, and y'all make that decision.
Now, if I, we ought to let...
And just do that, do that quarterly.
Just gonna touch on the golf course. I know John has asked for figures. I know there's P and L statements in there in the packet. I don't think it's time to jump in depth on the golf course right now because the lease comes up, May 31st, 2018. Now, that doesn't mean we can't ask questions. And one of them, that I brought up to Dr. Wallace, who isn't here tonight, I think the golf course, a big, you know, where we go forward with the golf courses will really entail from here on, because you got golf courses too in Marion County that are closing, which hopefully will pick up play in Dillon. Country Club of South Carolina has got all kinds of rumors about closing. I called Phil the other day, we either got to increase play or up our rates, because I don't think, I agree, we can't keep going the way we're going with the golf course. So I called Glenn, and I asked him to look at it, and I got Phil to bring it back next month about adjusting rates at the golf course. I think we're set too low. See if our golf course will carry that, you know, increased fee if we do it. Because, you know, that time's coming, fast approaching, but we're gonna have to make a decision. Based on the play and the rates so far, I know where we are. And the rate deep, so we gotta make a change on some things with the golf course to try to measure that with the next lease comes up, see how we want to go about it, what we want to do. But we got plenty of time. Your figures are in the field packet. So I ask you to look at it. Can I say something? Yeah, you can say something. I don't want to dwell on it too much. And I'm not, and I don't want to give a big and large match with you. The only concern I have, and I think the citizens need to know this, and the county has gave us $200,000. And that money goes all to the golf course. That money's lost. We can't do anything about it. Then you get to the hospitality fund, and we lost another $600,000. So that's $800,000. I mean, and we got another 15 months in this lease. So I'm going back to your question, because how much time do we save? We raised the rates, and we do all this other stuff. How much time do we give before we say we can't take anymore? We gonna go out the lease for the next 15 months? Or we gonna try to, three or four, five months from now, we gonna throw our hands up and say we can't do anymore?
In my opinion, we did sign the lease, so...
But it doesn't seem the lease we can't get out of.
We can get out, and I haven't looked, but I think there's somewhere in there. I'll check again. I think if we get out, we still would owe him the balance.
Because the mayor asked for $30,000 to go to our complex out here for renovation.
renovation. We could've took a lot of that money and put to our complex, and made it through, and done some things with it. That's the big argument I got. I'm not against the golf course if it made halfway the money, but we lost eight hundred thousand dollars.
That's what I'm...
That's what I'm saying, and I'm gonna leave it like that.
And, you know, you have a choice, and if we told them today we're getting out of it, I think we're bound to the remaining balance of what we would owe. Which isn't eight hundred thousand dollars, it was thirty thousand a year. And then we would be bound on the lease of the golf course, which is another twenty-five. So, we'd still be fifty-five thousand, but it's better than the other alternative, but I, the mayor and I also talked on Friday, it'll be a good thing to see with these other courses closing, if we pick up any play. It's gonna also be interesting, if we go up on our rates, what's gonna happen.
All those questions would get answered.
And they would get answered truthfully between now and July.
Okay.
And the reason I say that, the reason I say that, just based on our history, in three and a half years, August to November, very little play. And we may see with these new ones that may come over here, we advertised over in the Marion paper two weeks ago, Maggie.
We're doing three ads.
And along beside ours was a, an ad from the one in Fairmont. Their rates are a little higher than ours. So, we'll see how that works out. It's gonna be interesting.
All right, I'm about to, uh, Friday, a week ago, I was invited along with anybody to really go up to Wyman Gordon, fantastic facility, feeling fortunate to have that, that industry out here. It's really like one another. And back, Phil called me one day, he's, one of his patients is one of the engineers out there, and they want to talk to us. And I thought they wanted to talk about Dillon, and so, I said, yeah, I'd love to go see it. Said they wanted to discuss certain things. I said, okay, well, if they want to discuss on, I want it open for what they have concerns about. And I got it right here on my phone when I was texting him. He goes, Amy. So, we went out there, and I invited, we had Lynn Carr, and Phil, and Glenn, and Jackie Hay, and Bobby Berry, and the new development coordinator for Senator, Representative Tom Rice, and maybe one or two more. They kept us out there three hours. A big place, it's impressive. About three hours, you tell they are extremely proud of what they do, and they should be. But, you know, we got us in a group one time, and, you know, stopped us, and he go, here's our, here's our issue, Dillon. And it weren't surprise. It was, the guy, let me start back with the guy who is probably the head engineer out there. He came, he's been all over the country. And he says, when he moved in, his wife handles all the moving. And she is Googling Dillon, said, we aren't going to Dillon. And they did. They go, he lives in Amherst, he commutes every day back and forth from Amherst. And he said, he can go to Dillon because, one, the school system. Now, that's a perception of the school system as far as I'm concerned. But that was, you know, that's one. Why do you don't? Well, that's, that's one reason. The second one, David, was crime. And the first thing that came to my mind on crime is that, when we talked about crime in Dillon sometime back on here, is like, you know, I see it all the time, the worst places to live in South Carolina by crime, Dillon's always one or two. And I found out from talking to y'all or something, is that we report stuff, a lot of places don't report, on maybe petty crime, I don't know what it was. If that's the case, maybe we need to report what other communities report, instead of being on the top of that list all the time. So, when they come, and they talk, and those spouses talk, they Google it, and that's what they see, they ain't coming. We had, you got Wix, Scott Van Pelt today at Rotary Club. Wix is gangbusters out there now, really are. They're working seven days, twenty-four hours round. Both places are talking about moving facilities to Dillon. From Wyman Gordon, they're talking about bringing their Texas operation over. Wix is talking about this brand-new filter, and his goal is to make it into Dillon. But they're moving in and out, they're bringing in a whole new crew. They were bought by a private company. Private equity bought Wix, it's called Homel and Man. So, they're bringing in new people. In fact, the president of the Dillon Rotary Club is Lee, a nice young man, young guy, married, new child. So, he's going to Gaston, he has a new position. But he's told, he said, we're bringing in a whole new crew. And my concern is, is when they come here, they're gonna come here to work, but they ought not come here to Dillon. And as many opportunities as we have here, and I've never been more optimistic, and I said this a year ago, and I meant it, than I am then, but even more so now, after visiting these two facilities and talking to these people, and what's going on with the crew. It was probably ten years ago, twelve years ago, I went to the Economic Development School in Charleston, when they had great speakers there. And I'll never forget, one guy said something, I'll never forget. He was the city manager, or prior city manager of Berkeley County. And in Berkeley County, he said, we want our, these people to work there, but we don't want you to live here. It scratched my head, why did he say that? Well, he said that because of cost of services. But I don't think Dillon's at that point, that we want them to go here and move, we want them to live here too. We got, you know, we just aren't ready for housing. I know our crime's got to work down, sure, the school system has their issues, city with downtown has our issues, from that and other things. So, there's more opportunities out there for people right now. It's kind of like, I put it like the California Gold Rush, you can find the right thing in Dillon, South Carolina, right now. And it's gonna all get better, but my only concern is are we ready for it? And from a city standpoint, you know, all the things we can handle, our business, and that's why Main Street, to me, is a big factor in getting ready for, showing these people that we're tempted to get ready for, and give them more amenities, and pray that spouse to be able to open a shop up for them, or a new restaurant to come in. Things are happening on Main Street. And it's gonna get better, because Brett, like a stock, you don't buy a stock when it's at an all-time high. You buy that stock when it's on the floor. That's where you ought to buy Dillon right now. We're down here, so there ain't but one place to go. Not the right opportunity, there's a lot of, but I've never been more optimistic than I am now. And the last thing, I get calls and calls on this, let me go ahead and put out one. I know, all the restaurants that we've been waiting on seems like forever, I think Smithfield is not planning in Dillon. They bought the building, I think there's a for-sale sign on it now. They have, I talked to one of the guys of the Smithfield members, and I don't think they could get over that legal hurdle on corporate names. And I keep hearing on, I don't want to say Cracker Barrel, it's not Cracker...
Cookout.
Cookout. I just keep hearing with a lot of them on that. So, that's one of the many restaurants that's gonna cook, and they, those two have been on the docket, it seems like for a long time. Hopefully, we'll still end late, but we're doing good out there on Bradley Boulevard, the restaurants in town anyway. Get paid by hospitality, that's what we're able to do, probably. But that is, I might steal from now.
I was gonna follow up with both Wyman Gordon and folks at Wix speaking today. Another issue is finding employees. They've been asking for finding employees.
Wix is what?
Yep.
Catwalk?
Finding employees. I think Wix told us today, they have roughly four hundred employees. Was it twenty percent were temporary employees?
Let me say Wyman Gordon, all you with middle-aged kids, Wyman Gordon's not looking for you seniors. They're targeting, they want to target the eighth graders.
Exactly what you said.
You were saying about Wyman Gordon, I mean, Wix?
They have four hundred employees, twenty percent are roughly temporary employees. And the reason they have those, as he stated today, in their history of Wix, which I think was what, nineteen seventies is when it was built, Gaston, you know, they've never had a layoff. They use the temporary employees based on demand, whether or not they keep those or not.
Did it say if they were trying to bring the temporary help on as a full-time employee?
No, it didn't mention that. But I do know they have done that in the past, as neatly, but the biggest thing is trying to find employees. One of the questions I asked when I was within the Wyman Gordon, where do your employees come from? They get them out of, out of the Fayetteville area, Florence County, the Beach. I think you met a guy from Atlanta?
I thought three, just while we were in their substation or whatever. One was Olanta, not Uland, Atlanta, Olanta. Darlington, and Fayetteville.
Do both companies require a silver on the workpiece?
I do not know that.
Wyman Gordon don't require it. And I don't know about Wix, because they go to Dillon.
Wix, I'm not sure.
Yeah, I'm not sure.
I know Wyman Gordon has a class that you have to go through six, or maybe twelve, eighteen weeks.
How many employees do they have? I think they're right now about two twenty, two twenty-five.
What's their dividend count?
I don't know what that number was.
You remember? Twenty percent is in my head.
What are they looking for when they get a senior?
Primary engineers, I mean, they just can't. They got it from the school, right out of high school, they want the people to know that they're looking for that, all the way up to the pool.
How many employees do they have now, when you get going, so that...
Four hundred. Depends on bringing that other option.
Yeah. All right. Did it say anything about the CNC program? Was that affiliated with Wyman Gordon?
No, they didn't mention that, not at all. Folks from Northeastern Tech was there, and they're trying to do some things going with the, along with Wix. Wix brought up Northeastern Tech, and they should, you know, they need to make sure they have a good work relationship with them. With us tonight, and I know there's a lot on the agenda, we started last month with Chief Dave Lane bringing in some of our police officers. Last month, he met one of our new recruits, who just graduated from the police academy back in December, Mr. Pettiford, tonight. Chief Lane, if you don't mind, would you introduce your command staff you have with you?
I figured that it'll be best just to start at the top, and if you would, stand for me. And I think most of y'all know all of these guys, but this is Captain Ryan Berry, and he is the captain of patrol. And this is Captain Mark Marine, and he is our captain of special operations. And this is Lieutenant Jason Turner, he is over investigations.
How many years you served between the three of you?
Yeah, Mark's got fifteen.
Twenty-one to twenty-one.
They got fifteen, nine thirty-one.
Nineteen ninety-one.
Almost seventy years.
And since I have, I just would like to say that on the twenty-first, we will have our next community forum, as well as something from six to seven, and we posted that on our Facebook page.
Is there anything this council can do? Do we, y'all got all your equipment, your tools, is there anything you need that you don't have? Are y'all pretty well-sweared away? I know you probably don't want to tell me, but, I mean, this is an opportunity to tell us, if you need anything, we'd be glad to try to help you get. I know you go through David, and he does a jam-up job.
We need more police officers.
Need more police officers.
We have vacancies, and it's hard to figure.
Yeah, I guess. Y'all still have the calendars, the Rollup calendars, where you can tack it to your wall with pictures. Rollup does that, they do it as a fundraiser, they bring me theirs every year. I say I support y'all, then they bring me a calendar. Every year, this game. Man, what a fundraiser up there, you kind of circle by it.
Got to hear y'all say anything.
We have, we are not doing the calendar anymore. And there were some, some issues with, with some other agencies doing those calendars, so we decided to do as best to just stay out of that venture.
How's the new recruits doing?
New recruits are doing great, we just need, need a couple more.
Appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank y'all. Last several months, we've talked about different things that council has been interested in us to do, whether it was that Wellness Center, Sports Complex, just bringing up the Dags Wellness Center, that equipment I told you last month, has been ordered beginning the twenty-seventh of this month, which is two weeks from the day, we'll start making those arrangements as far as putting the equipment in. Ordered it back in January, but we picked a week where we can kind of shut down some of our instructional classes, so we could do some moving around equipment from one room, and flip-flopping the aerobics classes, and those type of classes into the old weight room and vice versa. So, that'll take place the week of February twenty-seventh. The TVs, I think I told you last month, are up now, those are great, the folks really enjoy it. Sports Complex, the upgrades there, the new bulk entrance to the complex, about seventy-five percent complete. Bert?
Yes, sir.
Concrete, it should be finished with that portion tomorrow. The four new scoreboards have been ordered, they were ordered today. Due to the hurricane damage, insurance paying for a new building there that started today, putting the new roof on, and restrooms are still waiting on cost estimates there, so hopefully, come first of April, we'll be finished with doing those things that we set out to do. The only thing lacking, which we were planning to do back in the fall, was some landscaping, but due to the hurricane, we won't be able to do that, so that'd be something we'll do this coming fall, is do some more landscaping out there. Janet is still continuing supplying information to FEMA for reimbursements, which we have not received any yet, but she's still supplying information that they're requiring for any damages that we had in place. As far as insurance goes, pretty much has been paid on all damages that we turned into our insurance company. So, that's been pretty good. With that, I think Chief Lane had decided he'd like, how many police cars did we keep? Two? Two police cars that were damaged during the hurricane. What they were gonna give us, the insurance company was gonna give us, we just felt it'd be cheaper, better to keep them and have them repaired. And I think we spent maybe five, six thousand dollars to repair those. So, they're back with us, and there for backup purposes if we need. So, I think that was a good call. Our goal is for them to last this year. If they did do that, we'll be in good shape. The last thing I had was the golf course information, which the mayor brought up in his portion of the meeting. Any questions concerning that, why it did give?
The Wellness Center, there was the squash, and it was broke. The bar that you use to go up down, I don't know a lot about it, I was kind of tacking about it. Did you know anything about this?
The machine?
Yep, that's what it was. Has it been fixed yet?
I haven't known, I hadn't heard about that.
Would you look into that? That's a, that's a machine that's utilized a lot.
I haven't heard one more contact about that.
It brought up last week.
Last week?
Right.
Yeah, I'll make a note and check on that. That's all I have this time, Mayor.
Maggie, thank you. You're welcome back. You all right? You having good?
Hang it in there. There's my new ride, right there.
Got to get off of that thing. All right, it's time to ask Smith Brooks, we go with our handle, Paul.
Thank you, Mr. Mayor. I think everybody should've got the financial statements in their packet. Again, this is June thirty, two thousand sixteen, we're recording on. It's an unqualified, same thing we've had for quite a few years now. There is an internal control report included in here at the back. No big changes there either. I'll highlight a couple of numbers. The balance sheet on page seventeen, this general fund, cash investment decrease to about forty-two thousand. General fund, tax investments decreased about $42,000. Total assets increased by $1,100. Left you with a one aside, fund balance of 2.7 million, which is about 179, roughly 180 days of your budget FY16 budget. Our recommendation is three to three and a half months, you're at six months. As far as the general funds I guess. As far as the income statement for the year, page 19, 20. Overall, we had an excess revenues of expenditures of $3,000. From a budgetary standpoint, revenues were over budget, roughly $51,000. But your expenses exceeded your budget by roughly $90,000. But you also have to sell some fixed assets of about $43,000, which makes up your net for your $3,000. Jumping to water and sewer on page 22. Tax investment decreased about $73,000. Total assets were also down about $900,000. Got big numbers there, appreciation expense, $1.1 million, which contributes to that decrease in total assets. As those assets are written off over their expected life. Total asset number will decline. The liabilities decreased about $16,000 from prior year to FY16. Most of that was overdue debt being paid off in March. Congratulations and thank you, by the way. Revenues on page 23, they increased about $130,000. Orders and sales were up, cap fees were up. We had some lightened insurance proceeds, some lightened damages contributed to that number. Your operating expenses were down $205,000. The net loss for the year, ignoring the grant activity, was approximately $350,000. That's year number four of losses. We talked about this in depth during the exit interview. I think the rate study has already occurred or in the process of that. You hadn't dealt it yet, but you would, at rates of spending money, you would deal it quickly. And if your repairs are things you've got going on, it's just okay. It's a monster to try. Can't continue to fund those losses without some increase in the rates. Other highlights, fixed assets on page 37. Kind of shows what you own at the end of the year. If you're on for a bit, continues to decrease as you're paying down the wellness center. Gatsby 68, net effect for the year was approximately $80,000, got worse by $80,000. Which is still barely due to all government expenses.
And what is that?
Your retirement fee. That's what it would cost, well, not the $80,000, but a lot larger than that. But if everybody retired more, it's kind of like this. But we are now required to reflect it here, if I have to say. And that was just a change from what I did to. Anybody have questions? Thank you.
Thank you. Brought up the retirement. The legislators were looking at a proposal, what's going to be done on state retirement. And it looks like July 1, that city's portion is going to go roughly on average of what, 11 and a half percent? To 13% what the city will pay out. And it will go up to as high as 18% over five years. It's going to be kept for what the employee puts in at 9%. Right now, the employee puts in 8 and a half percent. So the employee is going to put in another half percent this coming year. And it will be kept for the next 30 to 40 years. So the employee's cost won't increase as the employer costs increase. They also are dropping is their return on investment? Is that seven and a half percent?
It's a bit of seven and a half, that's part of the problem.
They dropped it a half percent, about seven percent.
Ever, as far as I'm, as far as I know. We should help, I mean, it should produce that net pension liabilities. Thank you.
Like Smith said on that exit interview I was in, it's after, general fund is fine. It's the water and sewer that's leaking. And it's leaking every year. We'll see with, put in place this past July, the budget year we in right now. We did about 10% increase in water and sewer rates. So we'll see how that worked out. I've got the information for the rates for this coming year based on the audit. We're looking somewhere between 3 and 4% increase for 2017, 18. And we'll talk about that in April.
You need a motion to accept the offer.
Second, the motion is set, we all have a second.
Second. Still some, you thinking about it, great in our kitchen? It's not unfinished business. Ordered at 7, 16, 17, improving that SRF loan up to $750,000 for the elevator water tank off of Highway 34. Which is actually 390?
It's 390, $229.
390,000, it says. 750 is what we had put in initially in our first reading back in November. Once the bids came in, they came in lower than it expected, so. But the loan's 750,000, right?
No, no, so they, in fact, Trish Combs found some grant money. And she was really happy and said that it was due to the great management of the city council. And she switched some numbers more to the grant side than to the loan side. And so you were getting, you're only getting, having to have a loan of 390,229 out of the.
Well, when was this? Well, we were basing it off of the first reading that we did in November, which was 750,000 at that time. Because we hadn't gotten the, yeah, remember, we cut out the tank, one tank versus another. The bids came in lower, so. The numbers I had given you back in December and January told you it would be somewhere in the 300, 400,000 range. Once everything got back to us.
Exactly. And you now have a grant of 749,000.
That's that principal forgiveness. All right. That's great, time to grant.
I'll make a motion to this.
All favor, opposed? Y'all need to sign.
We do, because we're closing this Wednesday and I apologize, we have to make a deal.
Sure. Yeah, we'll take time to make the sign. Yeah, 20 years. Yeah, 20 years of. Yeah, 1.35 or something like that. Well, you won't be in the company, I'll just take it if you want to break.
I'm going to bring the language out here, because 1.3%. So remarkable.
You need both of these, Ms. Mortal?
I do, and I might be as well. Let me just, what I'm going to do if I may, is just give this to my junior student right here. Pass it around and you all sign. And put this blue pen, I'm going to sit down and just sign. Write your names. Is there no further questions? I'm going to borrow a sitter for a second and we will be all done. We will be closing Wednesday. Everything is set up, of course, it's a drawdown. She is going to expend the, I think the grant funds first, the key dose alone. And you only pay interest from the draw date. So it's, it is a great party. Very nice to be with y'all. Sound like a reunion when y'all want me.
All right, moving along, new business ordered at 1701 Anex Hill and School District, number four, athletic field. In all favor, opposed?
Can I ask a question about that?
Yeah.
What are we annexing those fields for?
I guess it's contiguous to the property in the city. I don't know really why they would want to annex, but I don't know.
I mean, you don't get any tax dollars out of it, but I mean, that's still part of the school system that's in the city. If there's any fire or district or police protection, things of that nature.
Yeah, there's property on the other side, which that's the next reading on the property that we got is going to be annexed into the city. And we do collect tax dollars. That we do collect. Couldn't get that in without the other. If we didn't annex, that's correct.
All right, if the city annexes that though, that has nothing to do with the upkeep and the care of that. Is school still responsible for that, right?
That is correct. Did that pass? Yeah, I don't know if it passed. Camera, see if it passes. Ordered at 1702 Anex Harry Kenny Cook Jr. property at 1730 Highway 301 North, which is behind those fields? It backs up to, and that's the only way we could get to it. He wanted water, so the only way you could get our water is to annex. That's all favor. Opposed? Councilmember Horace Bell?
Yes, ma'am.
Mr. Mayor? Glenn, I didn't get to ask you a while ago, and I didn't see it in the lease agreement on the golf course. As far as the taxes, we don't pay taxes.
The only taxes we pay is on the golf carts, which is the lease agreement and that's what's that a year? No, we don't pay taxes on the golf carts, that was waived.
Three or four thousand.
Yeah, about four. Golf carts are like a car. We have to pay on that. And then the other taxes that we pay are sales tax that we have to collect.
And you're saying that's around three to four thousand dollars a year for golf carts?
Yeah, somewhere in that ballpark.
Chief, Chief Lane, I want to ask you a question. I asked you in the last meeting and going back to the minutes. I asked you if all the police officers had a vehicle to drive. And you told me yes for now, but once we are full staff, no. I lead up to this question here. We bought four new vehicles, correct? Here recently?
Yes, sir.
Those four cars, are they still drivable? And can the new recruits possibly drive them cars? Now, you said earlier in the meeting, we had two cars that you actually wanted to salvage and they can be drivable too.
The two cars that we salvaged, we have put those back in service. We carried them over to Florence and had them the interior shampooed and cleaned. And we have put those back in service. They're not being driven right now, we still have two vacancies. Once those two vacancies are filled and everyone is out of the police academy, because the officers do not get a car until they have completed round the police academy, we will still be short one or two, one car, one car.
Still be short one car. All right, so the four new police cars we just purchased last month, have they been issued out to the police officers?
They have.
All right, so the four cars, where are they at?
Those four cars that they've been issued to the officers. Oh, the cars that they were in?
Yes.
They are at the shop.
All right, that's what I wanted to ask. So Janet, I wanted to ask you if you could tell me, we got some revenue as far as gain of assets for vehicles. Is that what the police cars?
Insurance.
Insurance from the?
From the hurricane.
Okay. The $24,000 is what I was picking up?
Which one buy a car?
No, that's, that's. But I want to make sure every one of our police officers have a police car. When they do obtain, graduate from the academy. And I just want to refer back to the minutes, you said no. And then you made a comment that we had two that we were salvaged. And I just want to make sure everybody's got a police car. And if we don't, why don't we try to get council to see what we can do to help you get that? That was my main thing. Last thing I had on here, I'm like a mirror, and I probably can't find it in my notes. Okay, the DEA capital expenditures, is that the police cars? And then we got the money back for the insurance for the 24, am I reading that right? Thank you, Tom. Glenn, that lot, now, I mean, I'm fine with it, we have been talking about it. Did you smile about it? Is nothing on that boat on the tax or not?
I don't know.
For the meantime, can you find out?
They can tell, they'll tell somebody that bought it and you just won't tell them to call.
So the property, they're thinking about the order.
Still who owns the property? If it was sold on the tax map, I mean, on the tax sale, the person who bought it can't do anything with it until that year is up. So we fall back to whoever is owner of record.
And that's something done back before, before something was brought back to.
Let's see what we can do. This last thing, I know on the, this beside grant, you are awarded, that beside grant, the city's going to send you a 1099.
You didn't do it before, so let me know.
No, you'll do it because of the income. You got it. Like I said, we talked a lot about the things running into red that the city does, Glenn. And I were discussing this the other day about the golf course running into red, it does. The wellness center runs into red.
families to live here, and if we have any hope of that, not only do we have to have a nice looking downtown, we've got to have restaurants, but we've got to have quality of life things for them to do, and that's one of the first things they look at. If we've got any hope of attracting, retaining new young doctors, or new professionals, or plant managers, or anybody, you've got to have golf courses in the community, and you've got to have recreation facilities, you've got to have a wellness center. And I just think that's one of those things that we know, we've got to tighten up on the management of, and I think we've got to grow the revenue, but it is a vital part of what's needed in the CS44. This is my opinion.
Okay, and Mayor, let me just say one more thing before we close. I wasn't going to say a word about it, but Mr. Brady, you brought it up. The hospitality, we budget $520,000 a year in that thing, all right? We pay a mortgage to the wellness center for $240,000. We've lost 100, and Mr. Jeff, you can get your budget report, and make sure I tell the people this right. We've lost $117,000 as we speak right now in the golf course. And we lost $146,000 just past year in the wellness center. Now, if that don't take your $520,000 from them three things, we not making the money. We've got to do a better job. And if the golf courses took that much money, council would grab it.
Isn't that what I just said, is that we've got to do a better job of tightening up on the expenses and growing the revenue?
What we need to do is get rid of the golf course. That's what we need to do.
Well, could that money not be moved to the downtown renovation district if it wasn't in those entities out there?
That's sure good.
Well, there you go.
It's just a matter of, a matter of opinion on that needs to be done.
That's really good, and so it's got to be, it's got to be for quality of life.
Well, you probably can make a case for that, I mean, that poor downtown for quality of life. I mean, you, possibly, I mean, that's, that's a discussion right now for Labor Day.
Absolutely.
Okay.
All right.
I'll make a motion to adjourn, go into executive session to discuss a personnel map.
Yes, sir.